...that the regular meeting be suspended and the committee of the whole meeting be convened. Moved by Counsel Kenny, seconded by Counsel Moreau, all those in favor. Okay, motion carried. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Recommendation that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting of February 23rd, 2015 be adopted as circulated with the addition of late agenda item 3B, David Reed regarding a zoning request. Moved by Counsel Cunningham, seconded by Counsel Neish, all those in favor. Motion carried. So before we get started, I have a statement to read to the public. Just so that the public's clear about the procedures of the committee of the whole and how this works, because it is different than having just a regular council meeting. So for those of you present this evening and for those watching via television, let me explain that a committee of the whole meeting is a committee that consists of all members of council. This meeting allows council members to deal with issues in greater detail but is less formal than a regular council meeting. During this meeting, issues are not formally adopted, but recommendations may be made at the next regular council meeting. At that time, the recommendations of the previous committee of the whole meeting will be adopted and acted upon. Some key points to remember when making your presentations are: Remember, council meetings are televised, and it is very important to introduce yourself and if applicable, name of the organization that you're representing, and speak directly into the microphone in a clear voice. When presenting, please address any comments or questions to the Chair of the meeting. Keep your presentation brief. Five minutes would be ideal, as council has several presentations on their agenda. Once you have completed your presentation, please ensure you summarize any requests or concerns. The Chair will then ask council members if they have any questions. Remember, there will be no decisions made at this meeting on any requests or concerns you have made. Lastly, requests will be referred to staff for review, report, and recommendation to council. Council meetings are very full. We would appreciate your consideration of your time allotment. Okay, so we have two scheduled presenters tonight, and then I'll call up any people from the public that'd like to speak as well. So first up is Ms. Kate Toy, the Regional Coordinator of Success by Six, Prince Rupert Early Years. Ms. Toy. And the green button is the big on button.
Hi, thank you, everybody. I'm Kate Toy. I am the Regional Coordinator for Success by Six and the Prince Rupert Early Years. I'm here this evening to make three requests of City Council, as well as offer a service to City Council. I know there was a call-out by the city to have input from the city, and I coordinate an early childhood development table that is a table of many different businesses, industries, school district, health. We're widely represented, but we don't have a municipal voice at our table, and so I would like to extend an invite to anyone interested to come and sit as a guest. And then if you are liking to continue on as a partner, it would be greatly appreciated. It is a steering council, and we're moving forward with addressing the vulnerabilities of our birth-to-six children, and also the mandate of our table is successful kids, healthy families. That's my first request. Second request is, in the past 2008, and then again signed in 2013, the city did sign a proclamation stating that Prince Rupert is a child-friendly community. I would like to bring that back and have it signed at our Children's Day in the Park on July 11th at Mariners Park. We're having a large event, entertainment, and that could just be part of the event. I've brought the copies of those for everybody. And also, my third request is that Vernon, B.C., was chosen this year to host the bi-annual Cities Fit for Children Summit. It's a gathering of municipal leaders, city planners, people that make decisions at a broad level for a city. I've brought a little, sorry, summary of what that looks like. I've brought one for each of you, and once I have the actual invites, I will forward that on. It is November 12th and 13th, 2015, in Vernon, B.C. That is all.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions from council? We'll definitely look into all that. Thank you, Ms. Toy.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Mr. David Reeve.
Hi, my name is David Reeve. I live at 1022 First Avenue West, and I'm coming to you as a homeowner today, tonight. I'm here to ask City Council to consider changing the zoning of the neighborhood I live in from RM2 to R2. The RM2 designation in Prince Rupert allows for dense housing. Some examples are apartment buildings, the Skyline Apartment across from the hospital, the Helmsman Apartment on, what street is that? On Cootney, the Bayview Manor on Pillsbury. Some smaller units would be the Black Rooster on Sixth Avenue. So these are essentially spot-zoned RM2 locations within the city, these apartment buildings. And I feel that our neighborhood, which runs from, or the zone that I live in, sorry, the neighborhood I live in, the zone starts from the Ocean View Pub, extends to the Second Avenue Bridge on, on Second, sorry, it goes to 11th Street, right to the bridge, and down to just below Raffles on Third Avenue. So it encompasses a large area where every other RM2 zone in the city is, to use a phrase Zenel uses, is spot-zoned. It's one building within a larger area of R2 zone, a single building zoned RM2. So why I'm appealing for this change is I would like to put a basement suite in my house to, you know, essentially bring in more income, with some plans of renovations to take place over the next couple of years, and with plans of also wanting to have a bed and breakfast. Both of these uses are not allowed in the RM2 zoning, because essentially it's for an apartment building. Not to, you know, beat a dead horse here, but the neighborhood I live in is the only actual neighborhood, more than one building, that is zoned RM2. Like, we have, I think, I did a rough count, and there's over four dozen lots, four dozen properties that have this zoning designation, as opposed to, again, across from the hospital, the Skyline is an apartment building, the Helmsman is an apartment building. So I'm asking City Council to consider changing the zoning to R2, to allow for the permitted use of a rental suite, a bed and breakfast, a home-based business, all which are not permitted in RM2. So I, you know, I brought my own map here, but again, the, I'm not quite sure the procedure could be, went out in a couple of different ways. I've spoken with Alan Scott from the city, and he suggested that the change go from being zoned RM2 to R2. So I was looking at permitted use within the zoning, however, it doesn't make sense to allow that, because, you know, someone opening a bed and breakfast inside the Helmsman Apartment doesn't make too much sense. So I know it would be a large request to change an entire neighborhood zoning, however, I just feel that it's not really reflective of the reality of our neighborhood. Essentially, it's an R2 zone, mostly single-family homes. There are some multifamily in the zoning, but I feel that those could then be case-by-case, I don't know if it would be rezoned, I guess that would be a Zenel thing, but essentially spot-zoned back into an R2 neighborhood. So there's also some other considerations of if any of these existing multi-unit properties within this current zone were to burn down, none of them are large enough to meet the new building code requirements for, and city bylaw requirements for off-street parking, for the correct setbacks, and to take advantage of the number of units per hectare based on lot square footage. So there's a whole bunch of details that I could get into, but with time restrictions, you know, I think I made my case with, I would like to consider, or get you guys to consider, changing from RM2 to R2.
Just.
From RM2 to R2, sorry if I said that backwards.
Counsel Thorkelson.
Thank you for your presentation. We obviously need to get a, we're going to have to ask staff what the best way to deal with this would be. And I guess I have a question of you. Have you talked to any of your neighbors? Are they all, it would be easier for us if you probably went and got a petition and let us know how many people actually wanted to change to R2 from RM2, because obviously if we felt this was a good idea, and then people didn't like a change, then, then, then I don't think it's incumbent upon us to go and change everybody's zoning if they don't want it changed. So is that possible for you to have a look and see if you can, see if your neighbors agree? At least how far down the street your neighbors would agree?
You can turn it on if you want to.
Right. So my immediate neighbors I talked to didn't even understand that this, the neighborhood was zoned RM2. They didn't understand what it meant. And essentially, what it means is, you know, I could buy three lots, I would have to buy three lots, knock down all three homes, and then build a 12-plex or a 14-unit apartment or something, right? They didn't understand that you couldn't have a basement suite or a business. So short of going house-to-house-to-house asking, I have asked my immediate neighbors, and they said, well, yeah, sure, if I can put a basement suite in, that would be great. You know, one neighbor asked, okay, well, what's the downside? There has to be a downside to changing the zoning, because they don't, you know, they haven't read any, what it means. So they just figured there's a downside. Well, the only downside, well, under the current, would be the fact that your neighbor could buy, you know, the neighboring house and the next house over, knock them down, and then build a 12-plex. Like, that is allowed in this RM2 zoning. Under R2, from the half dozen or so neighbors I've talked to, I've gotten positive response of, well, yeah, that would be great. There are current uses in the neighborhood already where people have illegal suites. People have illegal, well, sorry, one neighbor has an existing non-conforming home-based business, because it was before they changed this neighborhood to RM2, which happened, I couldn't get too clear of an answer, but it was sometime in early 2000s, 2004 or something, where it was changed from RMZ to RM2. So again, there is, yeah, there's a lot of, I came at it a couple of different ways. Spoke with Alan Scott, I talked to Zenel, I talked to Rory, so they said this was probably the best thing to bring it to your guys' attention, that I would like to do this, and then go from there.
I think to reiterate Counsel Thorkelson's point, what would be good is if you did get a petition together, but maybe that petition also has an educational item on the petition to educate your neighbors on why this would be important for them, that why it would benefit them. And then if you, on top of working with staff, had that kind of consensus or support from the neighborhood, it would be easier for us to go along with that. And, because if they don't know the benefits and those things, then maybe that would be something to be included in the paper. And I think that would, might be an appropriate next step. And then if you can get those houses, I know the block you're talking about, if you can get those houses there on board, and I think that would be a logical next step. Is there any, Counsel Cunningham?
Mr. Reeve, I drove down that street today, and if every house on that block were to have your idea for extra income and put a suite in there, it's already pretty crowded for parking. How would you alleviate that problem?
Sorry. I don't feel that, and sorry, not to try to sound like I'm just countering you, but I don't feel that our neighborhood's very different than any other R2-zone neighborhood in town. You know, parking is absolutely an issue in town with lots of lots being up on a bank. There's no, you know, people aren't blasting rock to push in a parking spot, right? My house in, to be specific, on my house, I would, I'm planning on pushing a driveway in and having three off-street parking spots, but only three properties on our street actually have official legal off-street parking. Everyone uses the boulevard for parking. So to answer that, I'm not sure. But I don't feel it's too different than any other R2-zone neighborhoods where a lot of parking spots are on boulevards currently.
Counsel Neish.
To answer your question, Barry, I believe if you build a basement suite, you have to provide off-street parking. So, so I think that would take care of itself. On the other hand, I mean, to me, it doesn't sound like a hard decision, only because, like you say, everything is spot-zoned usually, and the only way someone would ever build something that's RM2 would be as if they had to demolish multiple houses. So it would be something that most likely would be coming forward to council anyways. So I understand where you're coming from, and I think it's just a matter of just doing a little bit more groundwork and getting a petition signed, but I totally understand where you're coming from, and I don't think it's going to be much of an issue, as long as we kind of get all the ducks in a row.
Yeah, so to agree with you, I agree that if a project was to come forward, even in an existing, say, R2 neighborhood, nothing to do with me, if a developer came in and said, I want to buy these three lots and put up a 12-plex, I think it would be in the city's best interest with, you know, densifying within the city without developing new lots, it would make sense. And I think, you know, that would be an easy sell. So kind of the same scenario with me, if we went in our neighborhood back to R2, and then on a case-by-case basis, would ask for, if a developer came in and said, I want to do a 6-plex, an 8-plex, you know, go from there. So, yeah, and that is right. If you put in a suite, you have to provide one off-street parking spot for. So if you don't have any off-street parking spot, off-street parking spots, you cannot put in a legal suite. So that would take care of itself with my ability to put in three off-street parking spots.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and until the petition and working with staff would be, I think, the next steps for that. So thank you very much for your time today.
Super, thank you, everyone.
Okay, so now we'll call questions from the public, and if anybody from the public wants to come say anything, you just come one at a time. Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Larry Golden, 1601 Second Avenue West. I wasn't going to speak, but the man brought up a topic which I, this is the preliminary work to the official community plan. It, I went to the meetings, it's dated 1994. At that time, they thought the population by 2014 of Prince Rupert was going to be 25,000. They were building the city in terms of that. It has subsequently been modified to quality of life, as opposed to this huge boomtown. But because of the four-year term, I think this council should reconsider making this plan their own, and not just, so the parking was brought up at this point. I think parking is a dumb issue. It's, it's, it reflects this 1994 thinking about suburbs and driving in and driving out. I think what we should be looking for is making a town which is concentrated, densifying the town downtown, making it more transit-oriented, et cetera, but, and less with its two parking spaces per da-da-da-da, and even downtown, make it, the people could develop things without any parking spaces. And I would also think that we should be having the seniors' homes downtown for the same reasoning. But anyway, my point being, I would hope you people, because you're going to be here for four years, would make this official community plan your own document. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the public? Call again one more time? Lotar?
Good evening. My name is Lotar Shiza. I have real problems here with what I want to say and so forth, because you don't have enough time. One thing I would like to put my name in for the housing. I'll give you a reason why, and I'll also make a further request, because over about a year and a half ago, I came, I think I, maybe two years ago, I came before council and asked that I get permission to use the audiovisual equipment here to make a presentation to the premier of this province. And I truly believe, because I was denied repeatedly, and it seemed to me, the reason why it was done this way, it almost seems like, I felt like they had paid for the equipment here, right? And if they were so possessive of it, yes, there would have been some expense for personnel to operate the equipment while I'm here doing it, but the payoff would be great, because I get a chance to speak, you know, like, actually bring forth factual information. And I truly believe that if I would have been able to do it before the last election, it would have made a difference in this province. Because, quite frankly, the present regime we've had since 2000 has been really detrimental to the people. Our rights have been taken away. Like, you, a little person can't go to court, you know, the only court you appoint a lawyer you get is if you have a family thing, or you're a criminal. If you're a person with disabilities, you have no more rights. Housing is out to lunch. And with the housing issue, we need to get the building inspectors involved, to ascertain whether an owner would have the right to have a occupancy permit. In other words, is the building livable? Currently, I live in a place, have been for, you know, three and a half years. It's circa 1920. There is not a stitch of insulation. There's no concept at all of weatherproofing. I moved in, in the first of July, and I got a real shock when the first storm hit. I'm sitting on the throne, and all of a sudden, I got this breeze. I mean, like, you know, somebody opened the window or what, you know? And then, as the velocity winds increased, the whole building shook. Some storms, if you're taking a bath, you have a tsunami in the bathtub, okay? That speaks to structural integrity, or loss of the structural integrity. The nature of the building also, I didn't have, for the first two years, I didn't have a problem, but last spring, I started having a problem with my, I now have killed 87, just in my place, okay? I've heard from others in town, it seems to be a problem throughout the community. Other people have had infestations. Let me jump over to recycling. We need to somehow figure out how to come together and put together bins, and I have an idea. You can get scrap sheet plate, okay, for 50 cents a pound. We have a college here. We have students who are learning to weld. The labor they put in, they get something for it, goes to like a bursary or something, and we get more bins, right? I'd save minimal cost. Doctoring, a big issue. You're looking at a guy who has no medical record anymore. I'm shocked, you know, like, for about 10 years, I had no doctor. It's not that I wasn't seeking one, it's that I had really real problems with the administration up at the hospital. Trying, trying, going back and forth, back and forth, and, you know, asking, can somebody give me help to make, to establish a relationship with a doctor? Not just, you know, like, emergency kind of thing, you're in and out, you know? And the guy doesn't know who the hell you are. I had to come to a previous mayor here, Jack McSalem. I asked him, could you go talk to Dr. C. and see if he would take me as a patient? He did. I now have a doctor. Through him, I just, how I found out I have no medical record. I have a problem with our MLA. It's been over a year, and I have no results. I haven't, I haven't even begun to get anything accomplished with her. The biggest problem I have is the welfare forced me to take CPP. I have no way of, that I can think of applying for disability CPP. I'm in a dark zone. It's almost like I don't exist. There's, there's things about the building I can't say, I've said too much, actually, because this is public avenue, and somebody could come after me in that respect. But I would like to be able to speak to people here off-camera at some point. This is where the use, the use of this facility here, the audiovisual, to actually finally tell my story, what my experiences have been. Years ago, about nine, in mid-'90s, I was applying for disability, and it took me three tries and then a reconsideration. So sheer tenacity, I got it. And I came across a publication by B.C. Coalition of People with Disabilities, and it was an anthology of individuals, what they went through, what their horrors were. I would appreciate if we could do something similar, and that way, we can speak to our government, our B.C. government, and ask them, why have these people been so maltreated? You know? We had.
I just need you to, it's almost 7:30 now, so, and I'm hearing all the things you're writing, so I wrote them all down, too. But just in the interest of time, I'll just give you a final thought, and then I'll have to close it, okay?
Well, we had a death, well, actually, we had two deaths, a child and a mother, and it's related to autism. In other words, a person with disabilities. There are some really black days I have, because you try to go forward, but you're not getting anywhere, because you're dealing all the time with your, with government. As an instance, I put records together for payments on phone and hydro. I have them, and I called up the B.C. Coalition People with Disabilities, and it took quite a few calls before I got somebody. And when I told her the scenario, never before have I been in a position where I'm paying less rent than our shelter allowance. Used to be 320, now it's up to 375. I'm paying, I've been paying 300, the place got sold last year, and there's a $6 increase now, so it's 306. But the difference between the two of them, I could be putting towards my hydro and my phone, and I've been paying those out of my food money. And I've been paying those out of my food money, or support money, right? And when I talked to this lady, she started laughing. She says, "You have some high expectations that you might get some money back from the government." Well, the reason she was laughing is because there's no process. How, like, unless I get my MLA to realize, finally realize, what am I trying to do? I'm trying to be, I'm trying to demonstrate that I have some rights. In this country, a lot of people don't realize, we have a statute of rights, right? But we really don't have any rights until you're in a position where you find yourself having to fight for them. Only then, then you have a glimmering at the end of the tunnel that there might be some rights. And the only time you get those rights is if you win.
Thank you, Lothar.
There's more that I could say, but suffice to say is, I'd like to be able to empty, okay, what's up here, so that other people gather, can gather, or gain an experience or comprehension, maybe some empathy, and then maybe a little help, and we'll go forward. There's other people, a friend of mine across the harbor, he could use a hand. I'd like to see if we can get a crew together to go over there and give him a hand for a couple of days, so that he can get his life back or anything.
Well, thank you, Lothar.
There's one other thing.
Lothar, we're gonna, we're gonna cut it there, though.
Could I please?
No, that's, we're good now, it's past 7:30 now. And I've given you 10 minutes so that I could hear you completely. I've got lots of your concerns out. I want you to know that I will talk to you personally, I've got a couple ideas for you as well. But just in the interest that there's other people here, and there's a timeframe that we're trying to stick to, we still have a full agenda.
I understand.
So thank you very much, Lothar, okay?
Addendum can be brought forward later.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Okay, is there anybody else from the public? Okay, so any reports or questions from the council regarding tonight's presentations? Okay, I entertain a motion to reconvene a regular council meeting and to adjourn committee hall. Moved by Councilor Kenny, seconded by Councilor Nish, all those in favor? Okay, so back to our regular meeting. Recommendation that the agenda for the regular council meeting of February 23, 2015 be adopted as circulated with the additional late agenda item, 6D, report from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the 2015 budget presentation. Moved by Councilor Cunningham, seconded by Councilor Nish, all those in favor? Okay, motion carried. Item 3A, recommendation that the minutes of the special council meeting of February 10, 2015 be adopted. Moved by Councilor Redhawa, seconded by Councilor Nish, all those in favor? Motion carried. 3B, recommendation that the minutes of the regular council meeting of February 10, 2015 be adopted. Moved by Councilor Kenny, seconded by Councilor Redhawa, all those in favor? Okay, motion carried. Item 6A, report from the corporate administrator regarding regular meeting of council, a change of location, a recommendation that the, that council directs staff to make arrangements at the Leicester Centre of Performing Arts for council's public consultation with respect to the city's 2015 annual budget report at the regular meeting of council scheduled on Monday, March 9, 2015 at 7:00 p.m. Get a motion, motion by, moved by Councilor Cunningham, seconded by Councilor Nish, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a report from the Economic Developer Officer regarding the NDIT grant application for the Fisherman's Hall. That's a recommendation that council support the Fisherman's Hall Society's application to Northern Development Community Halls and Recreation Facilities Program for a grant of up to $30,000 to support the Raise the Roof project from the Northwest Regional Development Account. Mr. Vendatelli?
May I have to leave for a brief personal?
Oh, right. Okay, just for the record, Mr. Thorcason removes herself from the meeting.
Good evening, mayor and council. My ask is that council support the Fisherman's Hall Society's application to Northern Development Community Halls and Recreation Facilities Program for a grant of up to $30,000 to support their Raise the Roof project. It's, a resolution is required from council from NDIT to support this application. It's no cost and budget implications, this is simply a letter of support.
Great.
Thank you.
Moved by Councilor Kenny, seconded by Councilor Redhawa. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Great, thank you. Have a good evening.
Oh, that was for the committee, the hall is what we were gonna?
Well, what it is, is it's regarding the resolution, and I'm just wondering if I need to add make a request that we also just would keep a weather that is somewhat general, not this one, it's one of these regulations that are actually NDIT grant, and I want to be able to tell those who are involved with this, that general. And I should have probably come up with a little bit more.
Mr. Manager, what would be the appropriate course of action here for the, just process sake?
Yeah, I think council needs something in writing in advance, and we'll bring it forward to council.
Yeah, that would be, thank you. Our apologies, I should have maybe mentioned that earlier in the, thank you. Okay, so could we perhaps get Councilor Thorcason back in the room as well? Okay, so next up, we have item 6C, a report from Councilor Joyce Thorcason regarding the terms of reference for the housing committees. Recommendation that council consider the recommendation as set out in this report. Moved by Councilor Cunningham, seconded by Councilor Redhawa. Okay, discussion. Does everybody feel okay with the terms of reference as set out? Are, is there any other questions or concerns? Councilor Thorcason?
I was just thinking that, you know, I like to get, I'd like to, your worship, trying to get these committees going as soon as possible. So maybe when we, part of it is that we supply staff with a list of names. So I was hoping that we can do this between now and, well, as quickly as we can. Because what I'd like to do is try to get those committees off. And I have some names, but I don't have all the names that I probably should have. And I was considering that maybe we should have, you know, three or four people on the committee that are going to be responsible for just directing the committee work, and then have some additional people who would like to help us get the surveys or talk to people, depending on which committee. Like, I think, you know, that we need to have, figure out how many people need supportive housing, how many people need seniors' housing, how many people need low-cost housing, how many people just need apartments to rent. And to do that, we need to have some kind of a survey, and we need to get, and I know there's lots of help out there, people are willing to give surveys out. And so I was thinking that maybe what we should do is have three or four counselors on the committee with the power to add by those counselors. And then, and then we can add, if people want to actually be on the committee and work with the counselors on the committee, or if they just feel like they would like the authority to go out and collect surveys or something else. So I was thinking, instead of making the, making everything take so long by waiting another two weeks to, you know, officially put, appoint people, if what we could do is appoint three counselors for one committee, three counselors for the other committee, the mayor could be in charge of both, or on, serve on both if mayor wants to. And then we could just appoint other people, or draft other people as, to those committees as we see fit. I was just thinking this would be a faster way to get things going.
Okay, so, oh, Councilor Cunningham?
I agree with Councilor Thorcas, and I think this is something we should get on to right away. And I think by involving all six counselors, it'll be the fastest and most expedient way to get it done. And I really think we've got enough people in this room to do it. And then from now, from three and three on each committee, we can reach out and get people to do some of the legwork in that for us, because it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be a community effort to get this housing off the ground. And it's a multi-facet problem, and everyone has different concerns. So I really think by involving the whole council, we'll have a real good cross-section of it. And even more so if you're overseeing both committees.
Absolutely. So, Councilor Thorcason, are you moving an amendment then to, for the, for this recommendation for the terms of reference specifically, or is that just like a friendly thought?
Sorry, yeah, I think it'd be easier to. Sorry, I'm just feeling sicker and sicker. Anyway, that, instead of for the third bullet, that council simply, the supply staff with the list of names, I just suggest, I would amend that to, that three counselors be the committee, be appointed to the committee, to each of the committees, and the mayor, ask the mayor to sit on both the committees, and that the, those counselors be given the authority to appoint other members to the committee as the work proceeds.
Ms. Bauman, when you're ready, can you read back the amendment?
Okay, I apologize in advance, but...
Apologize for putting you on, I know that's not your regular.
We'll get there. So, moved by Councilor Thorcason, and, well, actually, it's moved by Councilor Thorcason to appoint three counselors to sit on each of the two committees, with the mayor sitting on both the committees. And the counselors be, provide recommendations for the remaining vacancies on each of the committees.
Did that read correct you?
I just, and counselors be given the power to recruit other people to those committees as they, as they, as they see the need.
Okay, so, moved by Councilor Thorcason, seconded by Councilor Cunningham. Okay, so amendments on the floor. Any discussion about the amendment in particular? Councilor Redhawa?
Should we write down how big that committee could be, how many people you can appoint?
Well, the recommendation from Councilor Thorcason is that we keep the committees quite small as a core group, because a lot of times people don't like coming to more meetings and more committee meetings, but that, that we have the ability to recruit helpers in times, in terms of like handing out surveys, or things that we're gonna need to do out in the community, and that the counselors would have the ability to recruit those people as needed for their, for the needs of, what the committee would need. Does that make sense?
We have like six or seven, you can put like, you should have some kind of number, what do you think?
Well, I think, I think where we're at is, rather than trying to lock in a number, because there might be a lot of interest, or it might not be. We don't want, if people want to help, we should probably allow them to help. So what we should do is just use our best guess, and use our best estimate that, you know, we don't need a gang of people, obviously, in the committee, but we should have it a little bit flexible. So I think that's kind of what the, why that's being recommended like that. Councilor Cunningham, then Councilor Nish?
Well, what, what Councilor Thorcas is recommending is, I think, the way to go, because you have your core group of counselors, and then you can reach out to the community and get people that are really interested in it helping you. And because we're gonna have the two committees, the Housing Priority Committee and the Housing Identification Committee, it's gonna involve a certain amount of foot, legwork, as you might say, to find out all the facts and figures. And so, you know, by starting with just three and three, the counselors, because we all ran on this, everyone said housing was a priority. And I think a lot of people in the community, they still think it's a priority, and it's gonna become more of one in the future, that I think by using the counselors to begin with, we'll be putting our, our mouth where our words were, sort of thing, and getting involved in it, and then the community can get involved too. Because I know a lot of people are concerned, there's, you know, it's not just homelessness, seniors and that, there's rent evictions, there's increases in rent that are just, you know, against the law, but they're all happening and that. And there's some things the council can't do anything about, but there's a lot of stuff out there that we can help with. And I really think it's time we got off our butts and did something about it.
Councilor Nish?
My only question is, when you say about recruiting people, my only fear is that, you know, if everyone brought 10 people aboard, we all of a sudden have a committee of, you know, whatever, 40 people. So my only concern is that maybe we can ask as many people to help us gather the information that we require, but, but as far as bringing somebody into the committee, I think that's something that we need, would need to discuss if I, is that what you're kind of thinking, or?
Well, what I was kind of thinking is that the core committee would be the three counselors plus the mayor. And then if others want, if we, if that, if those four counselors believe that it's good to add another four, we could add another four to the committee. But that, but if those three counselors, or four counselors felt, three and the mayor felt like they were, that was plenty, then they could just do it themselves. Or if, or if we wanted to add, call a meeting to get some advice, they could do that, and people could come and give advice, but they wouldn't have to come to every single meeting that the housing committee might want to have. So that was sort of the idea, and it's to get things going, right? So, and it depends which committee you're going to be on, because I think one committee is a little bit, might, might do things differently than the other committee.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was more of, you know, as far as bringing someone into the Ash Committee, that that's more of a discussion between the counselors. And we can get as much help as we want, but you can't just bring people into the committee whenever you feel right, it's gotta be discussed. That's all I was concerned with. And as far as the committees go, I'm definitely interested in the identification committee.
Councilor Moreau?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one concern, and I'd like to ask just Councilor Thorcason a question on this. Is, my main concern, and I voiced it through it, is I know I agree with everyone that housing is a priority, and the municipality does have a role. I'm just concerned that I don't want to see us duplicate any services or start to try and reinvent the wheel where, you know, it is traditionally provincial jurisdiction. So my, my question, Councilor Thorcason, I'm hoping you can alleviate this concern, but is, can you walk us through the rationale to split the, or to split into two committees as opposed to just one cohesive one with different tasks assigned? Just kind of the rationale on splitting the two?
Because I think that it is much more streamlined to have two committees that are going to look after two different ends of the same spectrum. On one hand, you've got a bunch of people that are concerned about housing, that there's inadequate housing in Prince Rupert. And on the other side, you have suppliers of housing. And they might have issues, their issues might be that they need increased money for rent because they need to renovate their houses after it's been so long, or the, the cost of building is increased, and so that's why rental units are empty. So we don't know why, from the renter's side, from the people who rent properties, what their issues are, because not all the properties in town are rented. From the other side, we don't know what the actual demand is for housing. So is it transient housing? Is it supportive housing? Is it low-cost housing? How many people need those types of housing, seniors' housing? How many people need those kinds of housing? And so I see the city, the rule is gathering that information. And once we have that information, then we will know if there's 50 people who need supportive... 50 people who need supportive housing, or three. Are there, do we need another low-cost housing unit in town? If that's the identified need to provide subsidized, subsidized housing, then what, what are these guys over here saying? Are they saying, if we get some land, we're prepared to build subsidized housing? If they are, then it's a marriage made, made in heaven, because the city, city can do things to ensure that goes ahead. The renters over here say, well, we are, don't have enough capacity to do that, we'd be interested, but we need to find some help to find some loans, or to find something, then the city can also then try to use our expertise to, to go contact other municipalities and find out how those loans are made, or how the city can be involved in ensuring those kinds of, of housing projects go ahead, such as a seniors' housing project, perhaps, that would be identified as something that we need. So, so that's why I think, and, and why I think we're two committees? Well, because I think if you wanna get it done by April 15th, then you gotta fly, you gotta really, you gotta get your act together and move. And I think that to have both of us trying to do, all of us trying to do both jobs over here and over here, because there are two separate, completely separate groups, and distinct groups. And so I think that's why we should just split ourselves in a half, half go meet with one group, half go meet with the other group, and, and then be able to come back by April 15th, and sit down and have a discussion to talk to ourselves about, about what we found out, and report out to ourselves and the public, so that we can actually then do some of the things that you were talking about at the last meeting, which is, you know, change housing densification bylaws, put in, you know, make city property available to somebody who's going to build a housing densification unit. So, so we're looking at the city working with that. There's all kinds of things that we might want to look at. And, and then there's other bylaws that we might hear about to bring in. I was at a, a bedbug conference, I was the only councilor that showed up to the local bedbug conference. I scratched myself to death that night, but anyway. There's, there's zero four cities in, in British Columbia, there might be more, but there's at least zero four cities, most of the more, the, the cities in the lower mainland are actually making, against a city bylaw to have, they actually have a copy of the bylaw that we can, we can access, but a city bylaw to make it, the landlord's responsibility to get rid of pests, which would be rodents, bedbugs, silverfish, or, or whatever that are pests, and, and you could actually lay them out. So we, we might find, hear about more of those kinds of bylaws, from either talking to the rental, the people renting, or the people that are, that are, that, that are looking for rent. So that, that's why I think we should split ourselves up into two committees, and then once we know what we need, it's need identification, and from both sides. And, and then we can find, you know, there might be things that the real estate agents can tell us that we need to do, in order to make, make sure all of the properties around town are being rented, I don't know, but we need to ask.
Does that answer your question, Councilor Moreau?
Yeah, it does, yeah. Thank you, Councilor Thorkevinson.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor, is there any other discussion about the amendment? Okay, so all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, amendment's carried. So now we have a motion on the floor as amended. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Councilor Kenny?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just, just, I wanted to remind Mr. Eve that the credit union is generously helping people that want to put in apartments in their basement suites, they're, they're willing to back everybody. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to item 6D, a report from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the 2015 budget presentation.
Your Worship, if we're gonna split ourselves up, I, I do want, I know we're gonna meet for a workshop tomorrow, but do we need to do it now, at, at the, at the council meeting to be official?
Mr. Manager, do we need to pass a resolution, or can we do it by, at the workshop?
Oh, actually, you should probably pass a resolution here now.
Okay, so, would you like to make a motion then, Councilor Thorkevinson?
Well, maybe, maybe we're evenly split between the two committees already, so maybe we should just see who would like to be on one committee, who would like to be on the other committee.
Okay, so I'm on both. Councilor Kenny, or, uh, Cunningham?
I would be more than willing to take the Identification Committee, and I would recommend that Councilor Thorkevinson take the Prioritization Committee, and then Wade has indicated he'd like to go on the Identification Committees, so maybe we can just split the room down the middle, left and right.
Okay, Identification, Identification.
That way we'll be politically correct.
Councilor Kenny?
Yes, I'll go on C.
Which one, sorry?
C.
Uh, so the, the Prioritization Committee?
Yes.
Okay, so, and then, Councilor Moreau?
I know Councilor Cunningham had recommended me for a particular...
The Prioritization?
Yeah.
Are you, you okay with that?
I'll, I'll accept, yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so I guess that would only leave the, the Identification Committee left. Okay, so myself, Councilor Cunningham, Councilor Nish, Councilor Redhawa would be Identification, and Councilor Thorkevinson, Councilor Moreau, and Councilor Kenny on the Prioritization. Great. So, I'll move to appoint those members to either of those boards. Seconded by Councilor Redhawa. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so moving on to the budget, budget presentation, Ms. Bomman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to approach and, and give a presentation for the benefit of the public viewing from home and in the gallery.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are presenting the 2015 municipal budget for the City of Prince Rupert. For the benefit of the council, the viewers in the gallery and at home, we have prepared a presentation to accompany the report to council. The report itself is for information purposes, and it is requested that council defer direction with respect to the five-year financial plan and related tax rate bylaw until after public consultation. Staff plan to have two public consultation meetings during regular meetings of council, the first on March 9th at the Leicester Centre, and the second here in council chambers on March 23rd. Our presentation order is as follows. We would like to take about five minutes to review some of our unique services and our revenue challenges. After, we will present the budget requirements and the impact to property taxpayers. We will put this into context compared to other taxes, and finally touch on the need for a financial policy going forward. As described in a recent report produced on the capacity of the ferry service, our airport is described as one of the most challenging to access in the industrialized world. We are also likely one of the few municipalities in B.C. that have to fund their own transportation to an airport. Most are accessible by road and light rail. Although many of our neighbors and visitors benefit from the proximity of our airport, they only pay on a user basis. Our municipality pays not only a user fee, but also subsidizes the operation through taxation. 2015 predicts a subsidization of $925,000. We have some great servicing partners. However, contributing towards their operations does require annual revenue generation. In 2014, the city advanced $680,000 after flowing through casino revenue sharing and locally collected hotel tax. Council recently granted 65% of the 2015 grant requests, with the balance to be considered during this budget process. Staff has prepared this budget with recommendations to grant amounts in line with those provided in 2014. Now, on to our revenue challenges. In 2004, the province of British Columbia capped the major industrial mill rate for all municipalities with a qualifying port property. Therefore, the city can only charge prescribed mill rates on industry that is considered eligible. All of the city's major industrial operating activity qualifies for these capped rates. There are two mill rates that can be charged, depending on when the property was built. For those in existence prior to 2004, the mill rate is capped at 27.5. The industrial operations that are affected are Ridley Grain, Ridley Coal, and Fairview Terminals. The second mill rate is set at 22.5, and is for all industries that came into existence after 2004. This includes pinnacle resources and new operations for Ridley Terminals. The city's 2014 major industrial rate is 47.75. This is a 20 to 25-point difference. Additional challenges are with regards to a regulation in the community charter that exempts certain birthing infrastructure at port facilities. In the case of MAR terminals, approximately half of their non-land valuation is subject to exemption. This translates into 15 million worth of exemption, or, at the capped rate, 412,000 in taxation that is exempted. Part of the reason for the disparity in funding is the fact that everyone else's assessments have gone up, yet industry valuations, in the absence of investment, depreciate. They go down yearly. The only way to keep the industrial tax base flat is to have new investment every year. Here is an example. This is the taxation received from the container facility. The company has paid the full value that is levied yearly. Since the valuation of industrial property depreciates over time, a capped rate on a declining value results in steady diminishing revenue. In 2011, the city received 712,000 in taxes. In 2015, we will receive 585,000. That's a reduction of 127,000 in the span of five years. What this graph shows is the impact of provincial interference in a council's ability to determine appropriate rates of taxation on just one industrial property that qualifies for the cap. This graph shows the full extent that provincial interference has caused. It depicts all of the major industry properties at the full 2014 mill rate, and the proposed full 2015 mill rate. The total amounts that could be levied are the total pie. In 2014, of the 5.1 million that would have made up the tax intake from industry at full rates, less the competitiveness grant the province gives us every year, the allocation of burden to the remaining taxpayers was 682,000. The five major industry ratepayers paid a total of 2.85 million. It is projected in 2015 that the pie will be 5.5 million at the anticipated major industry class mill rate. Of this, the five major industry ratepayers will pay 2.9 million, 50,000 more than last year. The remaining taxpayers will contribute 971,000 as their share of the burden, 288,000 more than last year. The last chart showed an amount provided by the province. It is called the competitiveness grant. This grant has been virtually unchanged since inception in 2004, and was initially provided to mitigate the impact that year when the cap was introduced. You will note that this year, it has increased $15,000. Last year, it didn't change between 2013 and 2014. This grant only compensates for properties built prior to 2004. There is no compensation for new properties. This graph shows the impact to the City of Prince Rupert, other rate-paying classes from 2004, when the tax caps were introduced, through to 2014. You can see on the yellow line where new investment offers a spike of new taxation from major industry, but declines afterwards as assessed values decline. And I will just show that with the highlighter here. So here is the yellow line, this is major industry. The red line is the residential tax revenue, and the green line is the business tax revenue, residential and business. The residential burden has increased from 4.7 million to 6.6 million in 10 years. The business burden has increased from 3.2 million to 4.3 million. Major industrial tax revenue has declined from 4.5 million to 2.8 million. There are two new industries and an expansion of the coal terminal in this timeframe. Ultimately, the end result of the tax caps is this. Industrial contribution to the municipal tax base diminishes because there is a cap on declining assessment. This results in more profit and ultimately higher corporate taxes for the provincial and federal government. The result to the rest of the tax classes is that they take up the share of the burden. This translates into higher mill rates for residential, business, and the light industrial class. This makes it less affordable to open a small-to-midsize business venture. Ultimately, the effects to Prince Rupert is that this provincial international competitiveness scheme stifles the competitiveness of entrepreneurs wishing to locate in Prince Rupert. This means less choice locally, less jobs, and more out-of-town and online shopping. Now that we've provided a lay of the land with respect to taxes, we will present the budget. Included in the operations budget is 310,000 in capital improvements. The balance of 6.2 million in capital fund is funded through dividends from Legacy Inc., the city's wholly-owned subsidiary company, a short-term lease, grants, reserves, and surplus. These capital projects were approved by resolution by council in December 2014. Funding of this nature is not sustainable, as will be discussed later in the presentation. Our community is potentially on the brink of a boom. Based on the experiences of other resource rush municipalities, we can expect both positive changes and negative impacts. We have not been idle in planning. During the past year, we have conducted a housing study to establish a baseline, and each department has found themselves inundated with inquiries regarding service capacity and proponent engagement. We never forget our mandate, however recognize that to adequately engage in the planning for major projects process, we are at a serious capacity shortfall. In order to adequately prepare, management is recommending that Legacy Inc. provide the city with the necessary financial resources to plan for major projects, and attract the resources and investment in the community necessary to help us come out of the rapid change for the better. This initiative is considered a finite project, and is limited to four years for budget purposes. It includes obtaining the expertise necessary to participate fully in the environmental assessment process, represent our interests in the Resource Benefit Alliance, advocate for provincial and federal participation in preparing for community for the changes, and obtain the temporary resources necessary to help in the planning process. Should major projects fade into nothingness, the community would be no worse off. If it comes, we will be in a position to receive it, and whatever it throws at us. Our budget expects a shortfall of 220,000. This is made up of wage increases due to collective agreements and predicted energy increases. To balance the budget will require a mill rate increase of 1.9%. Here is the allocation of tax revenue to services budgeted for 2015. The largest are RCMP at 25%, FIRE at 16%, and Recreation at 13%, followed by Roads at 10% and Grants at 7%. These five services make up 71% of services funded through taxation. To calculate the impact to a property owner of the recommended mill rate increase, one needs to compare the 2014 general levy to the amount calculated this year. The 2014 general levy can be found on the 2014 property tax notice as shown here. The, the other levies that are on our property tax notice are collections for school, for the Northwest Regional Hospital. My, this is the school, this is the Northwest Regional Hospital, this is the Skena Queen Charlotte Regional District, this is the British Columbia Assessment Authority, and this is the Municipal Finance Authority. The city, all municipalities collect on behalf of the regional districts, the province for school, and the municipal
the province for school, and the Municipal Finance Authority and the Assessment Authority, and also Regional Hospital as well. The only portion that comes to the city is the general. We do not have anything to do with setting any of those rates. Only the general rate is the only one that council sets.
Going back to that last slide just for a sec. The general rate that we set last year was 8.42?
Yes, it was, the general mill rate was 8.42627.
And who sets the other ones?
The province sets the school one. The Northwest Regional Hospital and the Skeena Queen Charlotte Regional Hospital are set by the regional district, I believe. And the BCAA, which is the Assessment Authority, and the Municipal Finance Authority set their own rates as well. The formula to calculate the general levy is on this slide. Take the 2015's assessed value divided by 1,000 times the appropriate mill rate. This is the municipal levy for 2015. Compare this to the 2014 general levy, which would be, again, on the previous slide. We have provided all of the proposed mill rates on the next slide for viewers to calculate the potential impact to them. These are the proposed municipal rates for 2015. Residential, 7.37660. Major industrial, 50.13506. Light industrial, 30.49740. Business, 25.77710. And finally, nonprofit or recreation at 4.81391. I have not mentioned the utility or the major industrial rates that are capped. There is no change to those.
So according to that, the cap for the ports, 22.5, but our local businesses are paying 3.22 more than the cap for the actual port businesses?
For the industrial properties that qualify for the tax cap that were built prior to 2004, they paid 27.5. That is correct.
I'm looking at after 2004. The major industry cap at 22.5, which is, say, Pinnacle Plant, and any others that are built after that are paying 22.5, but our local businesses are paying three times that?
They're paying 3.27 points higher. That is correct. We have provided the effect to a homeowner with an average assessed value in both 2014 and 2015. Note, this is before the homeowner grant is claimed. In 2014, the average assessed value was $196,000. Using the 2014 mill rate resulted in municipal tax of $1,652. In 2015, the average assessed value is $229,000. Using the proposed 2015 mill rate will result in municipal tax of $1,689. The difference is an increase of $37 for 2015, or 10 cents extra per day. This slide compares the projected daily cost of the average homeowner in 2015 after the application of the homeowner grant. For example, every day a homeowner or family of will pay $2.52 per day to access all municipal services, except the water, sewer, and garbage utilities. This translates into $1.31 for protective services, 33 cents for roads, 40 cents for recreation, 23 cents for grants, 15 cents for the airport access, and 10 cents for transit. 83% of homeowners' assessments in 2015 are valued at $300,000 or less. Therefore, at $300,000 assessed value, a homeowner can expect to pay $3.95 per day for municipal services. Compare this to the taxes paid yearly for a homeowner with an annual salary of $70,000. The taxes paid to the provincial and federal government combined are $13,600 per year, or $37.26 per day. For a family income of $70,000, the taxes would be a little less. However, the daily charge is still much higher than the municipal daily rate. This means the average homeowner making $70,000 salary pays 6.3% of total taxes to the city. We offer a lot of services daily to the city, compared to the services used by the average homeowner daily from the provincial and federal government. It is expected that changes are likely. BC Assessment will release the Revised Rule March 31st, which will take into account any appeals to assessed value. Any reductions to assessed values may impact the proposed mill rates. I will move on to financial policy. The city currently doesn't have a policy to retain accumulated surplus. Accumulated surplus consists of annual surpluses added up over the years. There are four reasons why a retention policy can be considered sound financial practice. It sets aside funds for anticipated future capital expenditures. It provides cash flow to fund operations until current year taxes are due. It maintains a fund for emergency expenditures, and it provides a reserve for an unforeseen drop in revenues or significant unanticipated changes during the year. Additionally, there is no policy in place to save for asset replacement. The federal and provincial governments are now requiring not just a plan for asset management, but the actual funding of it. This helps a community qualify for grants because it shows funding of the city's portion of the one-third contribution and is a plan to save for replacement of that asset. Best practice is to fund depreciation of assets. We are not in a position to afford funding amortization just yet, but something is better than nothing, which is our current state. Many communities have now implemented a 2% mill rate increase annually to move into reserves. This amount is perpetual. It's a separate line item on their tax bill. A reserve policy such as this shows commitment by the community to save for asset replacement. Our community has a $288 million infrastructure deficit. It is with this understanding and the knowledge that to qualify for government grants, a policy needs to be put in place and in action that staff recommend council consider enacting a reserve policy for a 2% mill rate increase perpetually. A constant percentage is predictable for taxpayers and will begin to replenish the reserves we are using now and continue to grow for the years we need to replace our infrastructure. The city could request local industry subject to the tax cap to contribute, and Legacy Inc. could be utilized to augment the reserve funds through dividends to the city. The establishment of reserves also minimizes the amounts of loans we will need in the future to fund replacements. This idea is introduced solely for engagement with the community during the year. Alternate considerations are welcome. Finally, our report includes a notification to council and the community that we have received our final letter indicating the RCMP building facility for the policing operation is inadequate. We were aware this letter would come one day, and in fact, the city began the process of consultation with the community in 2012. The process stalled, but now we are in a position where we either take the next steps and have some control over what is built, or the RCMP will build it for us and send the city the bill. Staff intend to engage the community with respect to this notification and begin necessary planning. This particular situation highlights the need for a policy regarding asset reserves. Had a policy been in place, our reserves would be large enough to mitigate the need for a loan and would have had all, and would have had all community members contribute to the fund while the existing RCMP building was and is in operation. Thank you, Mayor and council, and to the community for listening. We look forward to the consultation process to be held on March 9th and March 23rd.
One question that you didn't show a comparison of is the mill rate for last year and this year has actually dropped, even though because of the assessments, taxes will go up a little bit. Is that correct?
The way that it works is that we are required to take the assessed values in 2015 and calculate what the rate would be to generate the exact same amount of revenue that we received in 2014. This is called the adjusted mill rate. Afterwards, we change, we recommend an increase to the mill rate to come up with the shortfall to our budget.
Other questions? Counselor Thorkelson?
So our budget is going to be increased by how much over this, over, from last year?
220,000 is the shortfall.
And staff is recommending that we raise that money by increasing the mill rate, which will increase people's taxes by the $37 a year. Is that what you had up there for the average house?
Yes, for the average house, it would be $37 a year.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Counselor Cunningham?
The mill rate that I saw up there was less than the mill rate last year. Is that correct?
Yes, the mill rate this year is 7.23906. That is the, that is the revised mill rate. But once you add in the increase, the residential mill rate would be 7.3766.
But it's still lower than last year?
Last year's mill rate in 2014 was 8.42627. With having to adjust the mill rate and then adding in the increase that we're proposing will result in 7.37660. So yes, it is about one whole mill rate point less.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just, just one last thing. Sorry, Ms. Baumann, would you be able to repeat when the two public information sessions are going to be?
I'd be happy to. March 9th will be at the Lester Center, and March 23rd will be here in council chambers.
Both at 7 o'clock?
Yes, both will be at 7 PM.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Baumann. So a recommendation that council receive this report for information purposes and delay any direction to staff until after public consultation scheduled for the next two council meetings. Moved by Counselor Cunningham, second by Counselor Kenny. Any discussion? Counselor Mo?
Just for my own clarification, Mr. Chair, I'm, I guess this question is for Bob. That recommendation to delay direction is just specifically to garner public feedback before any substantial changes.
Certainly. It's traditional for the staff to own the budget until such time as it's presented to council. This is our professional recommendation to you. It's now up to council to gather public input and really make the value judgment on what should happen once you've received the public, the public input. So I think that we've done our job now, and it's up to council now to hear the input, and then ultimately the bylaws will come forward, and council can determine whatever. The budget is now yours. It's over to council now to make these decisions.
Any further discussion? Okay, we got a question? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to reports, questions, and inquiries from members of council. Is there any reports from council? Counselor Nish?
I just want to bring up, I had a person call me about, it was an elderly lady that had called me about access to the civic center or more, the swimming pool through, through public transit during the All-Native Tournament. And I think that we need to, you know, as much as we appreciate the business that they generate, we need to make them responsible for keeping the accessway open. Basically, what had happened is a lady had called and said that she was not able to get off the bus at the civic center, which to me is, should be open all the time. It's a bus route. And she was, basically, the note on the door of the bus is saying that they have to get off at Spiro's. To me, that's not acceptable. If, even if there was a fire or something going on there, and basically, the bus drivers are getting caught for 10 minutes in the lane to get out of the civic center. So I would like to write a letter to the Planning Committee of the All-Native Tournament saying that they need to have some sort of traffic control or something outside that civic center to allow our bus to get through there because if there had have been a snowstorm, which it's February, it's quite possible, or ice, and you're asking an 80-year-old woman to walk from Spiro's into the swimming pool, I don't think that's acceptable. I think we need to make, keep them, they need to keep their traffic out of the way of the buses, and just for safety reasons, fire trucks, police cars, anything.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Nish. Other reports? Oh, Counselor Cunningham?
It's been on the capital budget plan for a while that Fraser Street's going to be upgraded. In the meantime, the parking lot and walkway in front of the senior center has bigger and bigger potholes, and I'd like to see maybe Public Works directed to just at least fill the potholes with crust or something until such time as, you know, people don't have to climb out of them.
Yeah, my understanding is that actually this has been the topic for the last three or four years, that the senior center driveway would be paved, and supposedly, this is something that's been overlooked for a while. So maybe that's something that maybe we can bring up to Public Works at one point, that they can take a look at that area. But yeah, that's a good, good point there, Counselor Cunningham. Other reports? Counselor Redhawa?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like our BC ferry and Alaska ferry, they cut their sailings, and our tourism industry is hurting this year. So I was wondering if city or port or TPR can make any plan to bring our cruise ship industry back, like we can do something about that.
I can actually speak to that for a moment. The port is actually, has reconvened the cruise ship kind of task force or committee around, working group, sorry. And my understanding is at the moment, there is kind of a reassessment of what that looks like. So there are, there is a kind of a committee already addressing that issue at the moment, unless, Counselor Mo, do you have any further information? No. Yeah, so I, my understanding there is, because it has been a hot topic lately, especially with Alaska ferry. I'll be actually going up to Alaska in March to the Southeast Conference, and we'll be meeting with mayors and other local people. And we actually have a delegation from Prince Rupert, members of the port, and members from the Chamber of Commerce, who will also be accompanying us to address the Alaskan ferry issue in particular and a few other concerns as well. Counselor Thorkelson?
When you're there, maybe you could remind them that although I was the only counselor that voted against it, we sent our airport ferry up to Alaska to get refurbished because it was less expensive than sending it down south, and it was ticked, and it took less time. So, you know, we have, as far as ferries go, we had our ferry down in Alaska, and we're using, I imagine, Alaska steel or US steel. And maybe, you know, they withdrawn their application. Maybe you could just remind them that, you know, we have to scratch each other's backs. We sent our ferry up there and despite, and did not get anywhere in Canada on our ferry, which I think was wrong. But the rest of council didn't think that way, and that's how we sent it. And they should be reminded that, that maybe they need to do some other back scratching themselves.
Thank you, Counselor Thorkelson. Counselor Nish?
I would just like to point out that that was the previous council and not the council that I'm on right now, because I'm in agreeance with you.
Counselor Cunningham?
Do we have anyone sitting on this cruise ship committee?
My understa, Counselor Mo, are you on this committee? Are you on the cruise ship working group?
I was invited to the, to the roundtable that they had with some other community stakeholders, just as an introduction, but we're just looking to see where it goes from there.
Were you invited as a member of city? Were you invited as a member of city council or a member of the NISCAS Society?
It was one of the many hats that I wear at the at the NISCAS Society and Rupert Lonangarden and with our society boss, so.
Because I would recommend that if a society like that is meeting, that a member from city council should specifically be invited or appointed to sit on it because the cruise ship industry does have quite an impact on tourism. And my suggestion would be if that's acceptable, that Gervinda Rondell, Counselor Gervinda Rondell sit on that committee.
Would you want to sit on that committee?
We can find out if they have committee or if they want members. Yeah, sure, I can.
I'll check in for you. Any other reports? I have just a couple of reports here. First, we went down to Victoria last week, met with Minister Corley Oaks, myself and Mayor Dave McDonald from Port Edward. We had a to our audience with her, and we discussed a variety of Prince Rupert and Port Edward concerns. Among them was part of, to tie into our budget presentation, was about the capped rates that the province has set to reiterate the strain that has put on this community. We explored a variety of scenarios of solutions of what that could look like, particularly that we're about to become the host community to LNG, to help enable us to be able to host a world-class industry of such a nature. So the the conversation was very productive, and we talked also about other infrastructure needs and developed a very good positive relationship with the minister. This weekend, saw the Chinese and Vietnamese New Year's celebrations. I wasn't able to attend the Vietnamese New Year's celebration on Saturday night, but I went to the Chinese New Year's celebration last night, and it was quite a fun event, and they raised much money for the Prince Rupert Regional Hospital, which was very appreciated. They do that every year. So I just wanted to let council know that, you know, how much we appreciate the Chinese association in this community and the amount of work and effort they put into community service into our community. Also, there was a fundraiser on Saturday for the Ocala Foundation, which is something that the Crest Hotel staff have kind of taken on, and it's kind of getting to a new level now. We raised considerable amount of money, I'm not exactly sure how much, for basically medical supplies and medical staff for a for a clinic that this previous fundraiser another year, a year ago, raised, so it's kind of finishing the job. And the city of Prince Rupert is actually, or the community, I should say, not the city as an organization, but the community of Prince Rupert has kind of rallied around this kind of small village outside of Cameroon, where this is, this Ocala Foundation is focusing on. The foundation itself has no administration at all. All that money goes directly to to servicing the area, and there's also sponsoring of children who to get them go to school and things like that. And one of the ideas that's come up is that, and this will be probably a presentation to council at another time, is that the city of Prince Rupert and some of the communities in North actually sponsor, officially sponsor, or twin with these, this camera, this village in Cameroon. It's just an idea that somebody was throwing out there, but I thought that was an interesting idea. So that was a great event, and it was a spread of Africa, or the Taste of Africa was the event called, and the biggest spread you'd ever see in your life of so many different foods, and they had guest chefs, and it took them like three days to prepare all this food, and yeah, and I was auctioned off for three hundred dollars to a charity, more three hundred dollars, so that was for lunch. So it was a good event, and many people from the community came there. Next weekend is the Chamber Awards Gala for the main awards for all the chamber business awards, so that's next Saturday night, I believe at the North Coast Convention Center, and tickets are, I believe, are still available at the Chamber office, if anybody would like to attend. And last thing is the Rushbrook Parking Lot, concern that Counselor Cunningham brought up at the last meeting, report is being generated on that topic and will be dispersed to council as a staff report as soon as it's available. And that's all I have to say for my reports. And if there's no further reports, I'd like to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Cunningham, second by Counselor Nish. All those in favor? Okay, meeting is adjourned.